Two eleven PM. We did have a few glitches that we didn't foresee, so I apologize for the late start. If we could, we'll go around, starting with Dennis, if you would. Just introduce yourselves so we have it on record. Dennis?
I'm Dennis Poggs, six word alderman, but I'm not a member of the committee.
Peggy Montag, alternate.
Chuck Peters, member.
Kevin Fangman, alternate.
Jerry Feath, member.
Matt Zachar, mayor. All right. Item one, approval of the report from the October 2nd, 2024 zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Board, what are your wishes?
Approve.
All right. So I have a motion to approve by Ms. Montag. I got a second by Derry. And any questions or comments about the minutes?
No.
Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, five to zero. Item two, two, five, dash, zero, zero, one, one, eight, one, dash, or Mark Anderson, a public hearing in action on a request from Mark Anderson for variance to allow a reduction in the required minimum front yard setback in a mixed residential R2 district to build a single-family dwelling with an attached garage at 511 11th Street South, parcel ID 3407445. Before I open up the public hearing, we'll go ahead and hear Lisbeth Edwerson, who is the, works in the community development department, and then we'll open it up to the board for questions and comments. Lisbeth?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the house was destroyed, on this, on the lot was destroyed in a fire in May of 2024, and a permit for demolition was obtained in February of 2025. Mark Anderson, the applicant, wishes to build a 1,626 square foot, single-story ranch-style home on the property with a 1,098 square foot of ground floor living area and a 528 square foot attached garage with a 528 square foot basement. The lot is non-conforming because it does not meet the current minimum lot width of 75 feet. I believe it's 66 feet. I, so, the setback averaging was performed for this property, and it yielded a 19-foot front yard setback and a 15-foot street yard setback. The applicant wants to reuse the existing foundation, which has an 18-foot front yard setback and a 16-foot street yard setback. So, therefore, the variance request is for a one-foot encroachment into the front yard. Chapter 11 zoning does allow for non-conforming buildings that are damaged by natural disaster to be rebuilt to the same exact size and location without any need for variances or special exceptions from the present-day zoning code requirements. Getting into the standards of review for variance, looking at whether the property has unique physical limitations, such as steep slopes or wetlands, that are not generally shared by other properties that prevent compliance with the ordinance requirements. In our analysis, we found that the property does not have any unusual, unique physical limitations. It's not unusual to have narrow lots within the city, and corner lots are also common. Therefore, the setbacks could be achieved if the building was placed within the buildable area. The second criteria is the request due to the existence of an unnecessary hardship? Can a reasonable use of this property be made without a variance? So, we did not find there to be any hardship. Any hardship claimed by the applicant seems to be a result of the conditions created by a prior owner and the applicant's desire to reuse the existing foundation from the previous home. The single-family dwelling could be rebuilt to the same size, location, and use, as outlined in Article 19 on conformities. So, compliance with the dimensional standards is not unreasonably preventing the owner from constructing the single-family dwelling. And then, lastly, does the requested variance impact the interest of the neighbors, the community, and the general public? We found that the request did not go against the interests of the public. Allowing for the variance provides a marginal increase in the intensity when compared to the 19-foot front yard setback. Overall, the proposed home and garage are keeping in scale with the overall lot size and are consistent with the surrounding development and the overall land use vision for the area. I just want to summarize and say that we recognize and appreciate Mark for wanting to build in an existing lot in the center of the city, reusing that existing foundation. However, we do, we found that the request does not meet the three criteria. Therefore, we are recommending denial, as we did not find that there is a unique property characteristic and that a hardship does not exist. So with that, I can, I can answer any questions. If Mark is there, the applicant, he can also answer questions.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board, questions or comments? Ms. Fangman?
Lizzie, when was this foundation put in? Does the city records show that?
Um, let me, this is, this should be in the staff report somewhere. I believe this was built in the 1930s. Yes, that's what it, I don't have the exact year in the staff report, but it was sometime in the 1930s that the original home was built.
And in that time, has there been any reports from streets or engineering for issues with the foundation in the position it's in, other than it doesn't now meet the existing ordinance?
I have not seen any complaints or reports about the foundation from the street department. I'm not aware of that.
Okay, and has there been any reports and complaints from the surrounding homes regarding this property?
Well, we have not, so we haven't received any, any communication regarding this variance request. I would have to look into the code enforcement files to see if there was any complaints from the past, when the, when the prior home was there.
Okay.
I would have to follow up on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Liz, would there be a tax difference between the, a new house, of course, and what, what it is now?
Would there be a what difference? Sorry?
For property tax?
Oh. I am not sure about the property taxes. That would be a better question for the, the assessor.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I imagine it could be, just based off of the value, I mean, a new home versus what was built on site before. But I'm not an expert in that, that field by any means.
Compared to what it is now, compared to, of course, having a new home on there, there should be a big difference, I would, you know, assume.
Agreed. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I've got one. This, this fire happened, this has been like almost two years ago now?
Twenty-four.
Yeah, well, twenty-four. And in this time, without, if there was any kind of problem or issue with the neighborhood, certainly by now it should have arose, and somebody would have, have said something. I, the fact that there hasn't been, I don't see a problem.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I have probably a comment more than a question, but I'll start out with a question, and that is, have there been any other alternate ways of, of dealing with this problem that are based on architecture? I mean, it seems to me that we're dealing with, go ahead.
Okay, so, the question is, are there any alternate ways of dealing with this, with the architecture?
Correct.
So, the applicant, so the reason why the variance is being requested is because the applicant desires to reuse the existing foundation, and the existing foundation, the eighteen, there's an 18 feet between the existing foundation and the property line of the front yard. So, but with the current standards, the requirement is 19 feet. So, the applicant wants to construct the home on the existing foundation, and he wants to make it a design, a certain design, that is not the same as the previous existing home. So, the, the code says that you can reuse, or I'm sorry, you can rebuild on a non-conforming, you can rebuild basically to the same size, location, and use, but that is not what the applicant desires to do. So, there's some design changes architecturally speaking, which is why that is not, that's not the situation. That's, if, if the applicant wanted to instruct exactly what was there before, there wouldn't be a variance need, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So, I hope I answered that.
I think you explained that before. It's understood. But it leads to another question, your explanation leads to another question, and that is, does the owner desire to have a full basement under the entire new house?
There is plans for a 528 square foot basement. I believe it's directly underneath the garage, but it's not an entire, that does not encompass the entire size of the, it's not the entire, like, underneath of the home, if that makes sense. And I believe it's unfinished, the plan is for unfinished, but Mark, if he's there, he can confirm that.
Yes, I can understand your explanation. Does it make sense? Not really to me. I mean, your explanation, I understand, but the outcome, I don't understand very well. So, usually when I look at questions like this, I try to evaluate if there are better ways of doing things that would meet the requirements and, and not be exceptionally costly. So, just at first blush here, why would this, why would we not be trying to recommend the addition of a, of a new, say, a new poured concrete wall, one foot back from the existing wall? Then you demo out the top of the existing wall, the house moves back by one foot, and does that create other, does that create rear yard problems in terms of minimum, minimum setback?
So, we have determined that the home could be, a home could be constructed within the buildable area, that, that there is enough room to meet that, that 18-foot setback, or I'm sorry, 19-foot setback, and meet the rear yard requirement as well, which is why, ultimately why we are recommending denial for the, the unique property characteristic criteria and the, or the hardship criterion. So, the, yeah, if that, if that answers your question.
Well, not very directly, but, so there would not be a rear yard setback problem if the building were moved back one foot away from the street? Is that correct?
The rear yard, the rear yard setback would be met. Yes, the rear yard setback, I believe, requirement is about 26 feet or so, and that is, that it, that would be met if it were moved back a foot.
All right. That's, that's a better answer. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
So, just to summarize, it seems to me that everybody's criteria could be met, everybody's desires could be met for the cost of, say, a $5,000 wall on the front side of that existing foundation. I don't know, it just seems like this is a big fight over, or a big question over something that could be solved a different way, with a little creativity.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Otherwise, we'll open it up to the public? All right. So at this time, I am starting the public hearing at 2:28 PM. So I'll call for, the first time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this issue, please step forward now, turn on the mic, and please state your name and address so we know who you are. And did you want to speak at all about?
Well, I didn't know if I'm included in that, anybody else, I'm the applicant.
I think this would be an appropriate time that if you wanted to speak in favor of, you could do that?
Sure.
Can you hear me? Okay, good. Okay, your tax question before, I did talk to the guys upstairs, and it's a, it's a $60,000, it's assessed $60,000 right now without the house on it, with the foundation and the property, that's what they're going to assess me for. Moving this house back a foot, then you're going to create a hardship for me, because I don't have five grand. You know? I don't, I'm not entirely sure how it would help the city to move that house back one foot away from 11th Street. That's my real, only real question.
Okay.
Was this your primary residence?
It's going to be, yes.
Was it before the fire?
No, it was not. I was not involved in the fire.
Well, that isn't actually my question. So you owned the property when it burned, but you didn't live there, is what I'm asking.
I did not own the property when it burnt.
I see.
The man that lived there, his name's Ludin Oliva, and he lost his daughter in the fire. And, okay, well, oh, we're in, he had a dream, and he told me that, God told him to give me the property, the guy gifted me the property, and that's a $60,000 piece of property right now, without anything that you or I can do about it. The guys upstairs are the ones that are assessing my value, the value of that property. And I think it'd be a crying shame to let something, a gift of this magnitude, the biggest gift of my life, a gift of this magnitude going unrealized. And, and on top of it, I'm a remodeling contractor, I can make anything happen that you guys need to, but I really was hoping that you would not make me move the foundation. Or, you know, what, what you suggested, sir, you know, boring another wall inside of the foundation to get it further away from the street. Did anybody have any questions for me?
I do, I'm just wondering now, I thought she said the basement was under the garage?
No, it is not.
That's under the main building, right? I tried to look at this, and I couldn't quite follow your drawings. Because we've got the
Okay, well, the garage is
Yeah.
The garage is actually going to be lower than the existing home.
Okay.
So then there's just going to be a slab at ground level, you know, slightly above sidewalk level, of course. So, the, the storage area and the garage are going to be approximately 32 inches lower than, than the, than the home, because we got to bring the foundation up to 96 inches, that right now, today, it's not legal, the basement height is not legal at all. We've got to add on to the, 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 the existing foundation to make it high enough to use for anything in the future, maybe.
Okay.
So, no, there's not any basement, no, it's just a monolith, you know, why, we're going to have frost walls around, holding to the attached garage, or the house, and
But the basement is then under the main house?
Yes, it's under the main house.
Okay, all right. I thought it was, but then she said something that I was confused.
This is, this is apple, this is lemon.
Yeah. That's fine.
Can anybody tell me what the existing foundation material is?
It's field stone with a slab port on top, and we're just going to get rid of the, they added two rows of block on top of it now, but it all needs tuck pointed, so I'm just going to get rid of it all. And then per the foundation inspection, we will reconstruct the foundation to a legal height of 96 inches. And there is a, a foundation inspection was made before, a long time ago, and it passed, but I do need to bring it up to legal height.
So I, I heard you talking about putting frost protection.
Frost walls around the edges of the, of the garage, the slab lower.
My, my question is, if it's field stone, and you're going to dig around the perimeter
No.
No?
No, the, the basement is actually rather small. It's only like 30 It's only like 30, 30 feet by 20, by 22 feet, actually. That's how big the, the basement is underneath the existing home.
And my last question is, according to Lizzie, if we were, if you were building a house that was the same, not necessarily the same materials, but the same configuration on that foundation?
That'd be a nightmare.
And can you explain why that would be?
I wish I had an overhead view of that house, but, yeah, A, it was a story and a half, not interested in that at all. And then, the configuration of the home would like be a very large letter C. There was a main home, and then a narrow mudroom, and then an attached garage, which was sorely undersized. So
Okay.
Did I answer your question, sir?
You did. Thank you.
No problem. I've had a lot of time to think about this.
When you were talking about the basement, you said, now you're just going to add to it, or you said you were going to replace?
No, we're going to build on top of it.
Just the top, you're leaving those sides.
Just, just, yeah, another, we're going to make it 16 inches taller.
Okay.
Because I'd never be able to use the basement for anything other than storage if I didn't do that, so that's what I'm asking to do, but that's really not in dispute. But yes, that's what I'm going to do, if you'll let me.
Any other questions for Mark? Mark, did you have any more comments?
Uh, no, I, probably thinking less, I say the better.
We appreciate your time.
Yeah, no problem.
Appreciate your wanting to invest.
Can I ask one more?
Sure.
And that is, you show your elevations here, and toward the, I guess it would be west, on your north elevation, you're showing panels essentially at the top of the foundation wall here, correct?
I'm not sure what you're trying to ask me.
Well, I see siding, I see roofing, and I see this area that is, it looks like it's divided into panels.
I think that's the cement block.
On the elevation, on the elevations?
Yes. Is that cement block, or is that poured concrete, or what is that?
Okay, you're talking about the south elevation and the north elevation?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, um, see, that's where the, the, that's where the garage is literally going to be lower than the foundation, but the studs are going to be longer so that it gives it one straight, I, I wish everybody built their houses this way, but it's simple and functional, and, but yes, like the south and north elevation where you see some panels, that's foundation.
Yes, and what material is that, please?
Cement block. Which is going to be reinforced with a lot of rebar, according to the foundation inspection. And the west elevation, that's in front of the house, and that is also concrete block.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time, everybody.
In the, going back to the public hearing, or continuing on with the public hearing, I'll call for a second time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this issue, please step forward, if you would, say your name and address, so we know where we are, where you're from.
My name's Roger. I live at the intersection of Leith and Apple myself, on the northwest corner. And from what I understand here, from hearing what's going on for the application, I have no concern whatsoever, I believe they should be approved, but like I said, I'm not up on all the zoning and everything there, and from what I understand of the house and the people that lived there before and now, or who are tempted to live there now, it seems to be a good idea to let them build. That's all, it seems like it should be grandfathered in, because the house was already there previous at that distance. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. And for a third time, I'm calling for anyone who wishes to speak for or against this issue to please step forward at this time. All right. Then I will close the public hearing at 2:39 PM and turn it back over to the board for any further questions or comments. I know I'm not on this and voting or anything, I just have a quick comment for Lisbeth. So the question seems to me, if I can follow this, the main question is, do we allow him to build exactly where it is, or do we have him move this foundation back one foot away from the road in order to build there? Is that, is that right?
So, if the variance is granted, you would be allowing him to build where the foundation is, at that 18 feet, 18-foot setback. The, the variance request is for one foot encroachment into the required setback, which is 19 feet. So, if you do not approve the variance, then he would have no choice but to meet that 19-foot setback, which then, yes, he would have to move the foundation, essentially.
And just for clarification purposes, I understand code, but I'm asking anyways. And just for clarification purposes, I understand code, but I'm asking anyways, we're looking at a, a set of rules that was put forth to us in a code that was voted in, in 2018. Is there, is there a, a meaning behind the nineteen feet versus eighteen feet that you know of? And I realize you're, you may not have, you know, it's always hard to tell, but is there some kind of safety mechanism, or is it just an arbitrary number?
Let me, let me go back a little bit. So normally, the required front yard setback is twenty-five feet. We perform setback averaging for this property, which looks at, it has a three hundred foot radius of looking at the properties within that three hundred feet, doing a measurement, using the best tool we have, which is online GIS, and then averaging those setbacks that are existing. So this nineteen foot requirement is based on the surrounding properties. And there's actually two, two setback averages that are done. There's one for the front yard setback, and then one for that street yard, so the Apple Street is the street, or no, I'm sorry. Yes, Apple Street is the street yard, so that one, that yielded a different setback average of fifteen feet, but the front yard yielded a nineteen foot setback average. So we are allowing that nineteen foot from the setback averaging process, otherwise normally it is twenty-five feet, and that's, that's across, that building setback is uniform across residential, that requirement is across presidential properties.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
Board, what are your wishes at this point?
I'd make a motion to approve the variance as in, as shown in the request.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I got a motion by Fangman, and second by Derry to approve the existing setback.
Am I able to?
Go ahead.
Am I able to interject? I'm sorry, I don't know what an appropriate time to interject is, but before the meeting is concluded, if the motion is to approve, I, I would ask that the board identify what specific hardship they are recognizing, and what specific unique property characteristics they are recognizing.
As the person who made the motion, I'll answer that question. We're talking about setback average, which tells me that if your average is nineteen, there has to be houses within that three hundred feet that are less than nineteen to get to an average of nineteen, and some that are larger. The foundation has been there for well over a hundred years. This is a small lot, I don't see the value in encroaching on it any more than there is, which is why I feel it should be approved.
Did you need a hardship also, or is that significant, sufficient for what your needs are? Elizabeth?
So if that, so if the, okay, so the unique property characteristic that Kevin is identifying is based on the surrounding properties, and that there is less than nineteen feet between some of those buildings and the property line, then yes, I would also ask to, for a hardship. If that, if that is the unique property characteristic, I also would like to have the hardship identified.
In my view, I don't, I understand what Jerry's saying about putting a, putting in a new wall on the front side that's one foot back, that would be rather costly. I also have concerns that a new constructed wall, which is a concrete wall, up against the existing stone, can tell you from my experience with construction, that's a difficult seal to make in the first place. You know, you don't, you don't really want to build a foundation that way. I think that the hardship that I'm talking about is not only the cost, but I think you'd be talking about two different types of materials mated below ground level, and I have concern that that could create problems for that home in the future. The only, the only other way to do it that I can see, that would be, the best structurally, would be to pull the whole thing out and do a whole new foundation, and that's immensely expensive and time consuming. So there's the hardship that I'm identifying.
Is that sufficient?
Thank you.
All right. All right. So I.
You all got to realize that the sewer, the water, and the, and the gas are already in it. That's the biggest value of that foundation, to be honest.
Okay.
I don't have to dig it up and redo all of that, so, that was it.
All right. Thank you. All right, so I have a motion by Fangman, and second by Derry, we have our hardships and reasons for why we're moving forward. If there's no more questions or comments, or is there any other questions or comments? All right, we'll move to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it five to zero. And at this time, I will adjourn the meeting at 2:48 PM. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Appreciate your time.